Okay. Okay. Good morning. This is the New York City Board of Standards and Appeals Public Review Session for March 22, 2021, 10:00 a.m. session. No public testimony during this review session. The first items are adjournments. Item number one, 2019-69A on 2019-78 Mallory Avenue. 2019-162BZ, 3336 to 3338 Bedford Avenue, Brooklyn. Item number three, 2020-14BZ, 34-1012 Street, Queens. Item number four, 2017-213BZ, 1808 Coney Island Avenue, Brooklyn. Item number five, 2019-98, 2432 Girolliman Street, also known as 102030 Columbia Place, Brooklyn. Item number six, 2019-279BZ, 4119 Richmond Avenue, Staten Island. Item number seven, 2017-317BZ, 1693 Flatbush Avenue, Brooklyn.
And that one, wait, wait, I want to talk about that one. Okay, so that one is an adjournment requested. It would, that'll make it the fourth adjournment.
Right.
So I would like it to be, it's the last adjournment. And I'd like our counsel to send a certified letter to applicant's counsel and to the property owner that it's the last adjournment that will affect.
Okay. Okay. Okay, decision items. Item number eight, 2017-261BZ, 527 East New York Avenue, Brooklyn.
Okay, I think I let everyone know about this. We need to reopen this to discuss the submission. So I'm just going to go through the.
You want to do the motion now?
Oh, I guess we can do that, yeah. Let a motion to reopen then.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Okay, so, okay, so it's reopened. And so then we'll try to see if, because we have a fairly light schedule today. Of course, you can never predict what that actually means in terms of time. So perhaps we can hear it today or tomorrow. The applicant was alerted that we were going to reopen. And the reason for the reopening is to discuss with the applicant the site's history. Because the site's history, tax lot numbers, and configuration and ownership have become very confusing. And as our counsel, and then at our request, the applicant dug into it, it got more confusing. First of all, and actually, it might be helpful to put a tax map up. It's block, if Kurt can quickly do that, because I'm less facile at getting the map up. It's block 1332 Lot 74 in Brooklyn. So if, maybe while we talk about it, there's, let me know if you are able to do that, Kurt.
Yes.
Okay, so I'm going to just start describing it, and then we can go back while everyone can watch. Okay, so first of all, you needed a recent tax map. There are three lots at issue. At the corner of Brooklyn and East New York Avenue is Lot 1. There we go, thank you. Click on the tax map, though.
Okay, just a second.
Okay. You can see the digital tax map up top right there. Such a great feature now that you can go to all the links. Great, okay, so thank you. So at the corner where is Lot 1, measuring 50 feet along Brooklyn Avenue and 61.33 on East New York Avenue. Adjacent to it on East New York Avenue is the subject Lot 74 with 44 feet on East New York and 50 feet deep. Adjacent to that is Lot 73 with 20 feet fronting on East New York and 100 feet deep. And some of the reason for the confusion is we, we lost track of which lot they were even talking about as we're reading the papers. So the request to the applicant was, explain to us which lot we're talking about. We're really confused. So the subject lot is in an R6 zoning district, and all but five feet of it are located within 100 feet of a corner. So no rear yard is required, except for that five feet that's more than 100 feet from a corner. And since the lot is shallow, only a 10-foot rear yard would be required if the lot were owned separately from adjoining lots in 1961. And then, and on the date of application for permit, otherwise, a 30-foot rear yard is required. So the rear yard waiver is, is one of, is one of the requests. Further, for interior lots, and that's pretty critical, in an R6, the maximum lot coverage is 65%, but for corner lots, it's 70%. The proposed coverage is 100%, so a waiver would be required either way. But one way, it's a lesser variance, so 65 versus 70 if it's treated as a corner lot. The, the last certificate of occupancy provided to us and available on Biz is dated March 7, 1945. It indicates it is for Lot 4073. That was fast. Yeah, this is worth looking at. It indicates it's for Lot 73. But. Oops, what happened? There you go. But the description says lots.
I'm fine.
But, but the description, if you look at, you see, it says this certifies, and it says building premises located 61 foot 2 inches, scroll back up a little bit. 61 foot 2 inches east of Brooklyn Avenue. So actually, that description is describing Lot 74, which is the subject lot. The CO indicates that in 1945, the building contained a candy factory on the first floor and apartment on the second floor. So because of the confusion, so, and, and so the argument is that's the CO really for the subject lot, even though it's for 73, that's pretty confusing. Because of the confusion with the tax lot numbers, we reopened the case to have it cleared up. And in the process, learned at the last hearing that the subject lot was held in common with adjacent Lot 73, actually, which is to the east, from 1990 until 2007. So at the last hearing, we asked the applicant to explain why the application did not therefore fail on the D finding for self-created hardship. And I want to read the D finding because I, I think there's some confusion by the applicant. The D finding says that the practical difficulties or unnecessary hardship claimed as a ground for a variance have not been created by the owner or by a predecessor entitled. So I thought, because the D finding is quite clear, it's a predecessor entitled, I thought the counsel for the applicant understood it, what it was being tasked with, and closed the hearing. Unfortunately, the submission indicates both that the task was not understood and also adds further wrinkles to the case. The applicant confuses the language of the D finding, which refers to difficulty or hardship created by a predecessor entitled with the language in the shallow lot regulations of Section 24-37. The D finding, as I said, attributes self-created hardship to any predecessor entitled, which the board narrows to predecessors after December 1961. Section 24-37 allows a reduced rear yard when there is proof that the lot was held separately both on December 1961 and at the time of application for permit, while ignoring the intervening years. So the standard is different. And I saw that applicant counsel is applying the 24-37 standard to the question presented about the D finding. Why is this not a self-created hardship? Furthermore, to clarify, and we've said this many times in other situations like this, in its review of dozens, if not hundreds, of variance applications for small lots, this board always looks at ownership of adjoining lots as demonstration that the lot in question suffers a special hardship, distinguished from the others that make use of their adjoining properties for parking, storage, or other amenities, or have the opportunity to expand horizontally. Applicants provide us with area-wide uniqueness studies and distinguish their burden lots from other similarly sized lots by indicating common ownership with the neighbors of the other lots. So we're not talking about whether commonly-held lots are on the same zoning lot. We're talking about commonly-held ownership. That's always what's brought up as a way to distinguish a small burden lot from other lots in the study area that are also small but share common ownership with an adjoining lot. Clearly, in this case, at the very least, the lot was held in common with Lot 73 between 1990 and 2007. And in fact, the record really isn't clear of, about that ownership period because there appears to be an open on acress, an open right of first refusal for the Lot 74 owner to purchase Lot 73. So this is a, there was a document recorded transferring ownership of Lot 74 and 73, well, let's say, and a right of first refusal to purchase Lot 73. And it doesn't look like the right of first refusal ever expired. It looks like it's still available. And in fact, to support that, tax bills for Lot 73 were paid by the subject applicant until at least 2009. The last submission, also by the applicant's counsel, presents a new complication. Based on historical map, tax maps, it turns out that the Lot 74 was created in 1975 as a subdivision of Lot 1. And the new smaller, and the new, somebody needs, I'm going to mute Ted who stole. And the new smaller, sorry, Lot 1 immediately, that was immediately sold to an unrelated party the same year. In 1982, Lot 1 was sold to the owner of subject Lot 74 and held until it sailed to another party in 1984. So we have post-61 common ownership on both sides of the subject lot. Hence, without more, we have a self-created hardship issue that needs to be addressed. In this respect, I refer the applicant, because this is a, this is a not-for-profit religious institution, right? I refer the applicant to our discussion in the project witness case, which was also a not-for-profit religious deference case with active common ownership of the adjoining lot. We have several other similar cases that applicants should also be consulting to support the D finding, which our counsel and our, our directors can direct you to. There was one where the, the two lots almost created like a little butterfly. And so the two lots could, even if they had been, had not been separated, they couldn't have been developed as one lot. Those are, that's actually the test you have to go through. If the lots had not been separated, what would the waivers, if any, be needed to satisfy programmatic needs requirement, right? Because this is a deference case, right? With respect to the rear yard condition, had the three lots been held in common ownership, a rear yard waiver would still have been needed for the five-foot portion of the lot, even if you were developing on the entirety of Lot 1 and 74 and, and 73, to the extent that you could do that, you still would have had that strange little bump. However, I don't think you can make the same claim with respect to lot coverage, especially since the existing building on Lot 73 is only one-story, so it doesn't count as lot coverage in this district. So that would need to be demonstrated. And merely referring to prior board decisions, which is what happened, they just simply submitted a whole bunch of decisions and said, we're good, without referring to the prior board decisions, without a demonstration that the lot coverage regs would, regulations would thwart the project, even if the three lots were in common ownership, is not sufficient. We need to see drawings, and as was done in the cited cases. And in particular, that project witness case went to the, through the exercise, more than an exercise, they had to demonstrate to us that a combination of the two needed uses on those two sites would not have been compatible. So, so that's, those are the, the issues that are raised. It's, it's, uh, it's difficult. And then the idea that deference overcomes, deference is related to the A finding. It is not related to the D finding. And so you cannot claim religious deference and say, everything goes even if we create the hardship complaint of, because that would open the door for all kinds of abuse of purchasing a lot and then subdividing it into strange things to qualify for a variance. So, so that's the issue. So I'll go around the room if anybody, yeah, Carla, go ahead.
Yeah, just wanted, obviously, the other board members haven't spoken yet, but the applicant's representative was alerted and is prepared to either be available today or tomorrow, time permitting, if the board is to reopen this matter.
Okay, so we did reopen. And, and based on the time today, either probably the afternoon session as opposed to the morning session, we'll see how we go.
Yeah, just let me know so that I can coordinate with, with the representative.
We're, we're not going to know until it happens. So they're going to have to play it by ear, okay?
Thank you.
Okay. All right, so Vice Chair Chanda?
No, I have no comments.
Okay. Commissioner Otley Brown?
I agree with you that the one way in which to prove that this is not a self-created hardship would definitely be to sketch what a building would look like if those lots were held together today, and then show that you would still need the same waivers. I think that reopening it and allowing them to come before us today is important, but more importantly is that they do the work outside of the hearing to create the drawings and the narrative that accompanies it to prove that this, this project would not be a self-created hardship.
Great, thank you, I appreciate it. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. I agree with you, Chair. I, I, reading the response from the, from the applicant, I, I didn't see that the applicant addressed what we spoke about during the last hearing. All what I got from the response was, was like that Lot 73 was separate from the subject lot. And I wasn't sure what is, what does separate mean. So I, I believe they need to, like, look into our comments from today and from the last hearing and, and like, appear before us and explain to us why they don't believe this is a case of self-created hardship. So I'm waiting for their response.
Thank you. Commissioner Shabeta? Did we lose Commissioner Shabeta? I don't see him on here. I think he might have dropped. Uh-oh.
Commissioner Shabeta just alerted me that he has to step away for a bit.
Okay, okay. All right, so, well, that was a quorum, so we're still good. Okay, so, oh, right, we'll see how we're going the rest of the day about whether it's in the morning or the afternoon or tomorrow, okay?
Okay, the next, next item up for decision is item number nine, 2020-3A, 14218 Hook Creek Boulevard, Queens.
Okay. We have a January 28 sign-off letter from DOT with comments. And the applicant submitted a revised site plan to address the DOT comment, so I think we're okay with DOT now. And, but we're still missing, unless it just showed up, fire department review. And they had asked for more time at the last hearing to determine about the apparatus. So I, I think, unless we receive it like right now, we should just defer this until, you know, either later today or something, right? Tony, you don't see it, right? I looked and I didn't.
Uh, no. I'm looking at the emails. I don't know, Jaleen, if this is Jaleen's.
Yeah. I, I didn't see it anywhere. And unless Chief Daley sends us something, what we can do is defer it to later today or tomorrow if we do receive it. Otherwise, we have to put it on for another decision. Okay, and I just want to alert our counsel on, on the tax and zoning lot subdivision. I had a comment about the zoning lot subdivision, where they're creating this really weird tax lot. And the reason they're doing it with a very acute angle for the, what would have been the rear yard line. And they're doing that so that they avoid rear yard regulations. So what it does is it puts the rear lot line of the existing house only two feet away from the rear lot line of the new house and, of the new lot. And so I don't want our, our review, our decision on a GCL waiver to influence DOB thinking that somehow we signed off on the, on the zoning lot subdivision. We didn't look at it at all. So I want the resolution to make clear that the BSA takes no position on the legality of the zoning lot and tax lot subdivision and defers to DOB to review the zoning lot subdivision with respect to proposed and existing structures on the lots. So is, understood?
Okay.
Not all, okay? Yes.
I don't know.
Sorry.
Can we add a note to the drawings? Because I, I, I believe looking at the resolution might be like, like, for me, the resolution compared, as compared to the drawings is like the firebrand. Can we add a note to the drawings to make, like, the alert more clear and evident?
Yes, okay, so let's do that also. So direction to the applicant that it will, it says on the drawings, "DOB to review the zoning lot subdivision with respect to proposed and existing structures on the lots." Right? Okay, yeah, I just found it quite, I mean, especially in, in light of some of the appeals cases we've seen recently, the idea that DOB is okay with the creation of particularly bizarre lines is, you know, and, and then the other part of it is, if someone comes 10 years from now and says, look at my tax lot, it's bizarre, right? It looks, it's, it's this acute triangle. I need a, I need a variance because I can't comply with something, something. Then what, right? I can't enlarge my house because of my acute triangle. So they created, and will the next board be as attentive to the self-created hardships? I don't know. So that's what I'm concerned about, anyway. So, so anyway, we need to defer, but let's go around, see if other commissioners have comments. Vice Chair Chanda?
No, I agree with you. I, the subdivision is odd, and that's not what we are weighing in on. So a note to that effect, to alert everybody, seems appropriate. I'm fine otherwise.
Okay. Commissioner Otley Brown?
I have no comments.
Okay. Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. Nothing further from me.
Okay. And Commissioner Shabeta still, still is not present, okay?
Okay. Item number 10, 2020-72BZ, 85J Street, Brooklyn.
Yeah, hold on a second. Um. Okay, the drawings were revised to show the location of fitness equipment and acoustical treatments, which is what we asked for. It looks like in the general fitness area, the architects are relying on the separation between the cellar level and the first residential floors to do most of the work in terms of noise and vibration. Since, since the details, sorry, sorry, since the details for that floor only show some sort of acoustical tile glued to the concrete slab ceiling and resilient flooring, and no horizontal transmission to structure for activities under the courtyard. So they're relying on, there won't be horizontal transmission to columns. And all they're doing is like gluing rubber, essentially, to the floor and to the ceiling. So I would like to have this, a conditional approval, as we really probably should have on all of our PCEs, but a conditional approval that the, that the PC shall present no noise or vibration issues to building tenants. And, and sort of move it like that, because we brought this subject up before, and they didn't pick up on it in this submission. So they're preferring, save the money. This is maybe one of those cases where cheap will be expensive, because they have, they have all kinds of oscillating equipment that builds up to that beautiful vibration level that rocks bridges to collapse and things like that. So, you know, that's what they're going to be dealing with. So that's my, my motion to, to grant on condition of presenting no noise or vibration issues to building tenants. And of course, if you have comments as we go around the room, please, so state, okay? So we'll just go around the room and, and then you can add something to the, or actually, maybe I'll go to Commissioner Sheta in case we want to add some language.
Yeah, I'm not sure I have in my, my notes that I, I did require, request that a letter from the structural engineer. Didn't I?
I think you requested it, and if I remember correctly, this was the one where the letter, we did get a letter, and the letter basically said, or maybe this isn't the one, I don't know, that the letter basically said the building is built to code, which was not your question. I'm not sure if this.
I'm, I'm looking for that kind, I, I'm looking for that kind of response, but I, I couldn't find it. I'm not sure if that was submitted. But I, I, I don't see, I know in, in my list that's spoken about any feedback from a structural engineer. Maybe they submitted it and, and I missed it, but I, I don't see it. If, if they did, if, if they did, I, I, I would even, like, condition. I, the only note I highlighted twice is, we should condition on noise and vibration. I, I did this during the last hearing and during this hearing as well. So I believe we should, we should keep that.
Okay. Because even, you know, the engineer will, will only say what he's willing to say, he or she is willing to say, right? So it'll usually say, it's built according to code. And that's the end of that. And hopefully, it won't transmit vibration from the spin studio. At least the spin studios are better isolated. But what they don't realize is there's a separate spin studio, and then there are spinning cycles in the general exercise room along with treadmills, rowing machines, all that stuff. Those are the things that create vibration, and we see that often in the Orange Theory of gyms, where they have a serious problem, because they have so many of those going at a time. So hopefully, in some not-too-distant future, the gyms will be filled up like that again, and everyone will be running on those treadmills. And then they get to that, that perfect level that translates to the vertical supports. And then you feel it in the apartment on the fourth floor. But so, let's see.
I, I'm not sure if they ever provided this kind of engineering letter. But I would say, yes, typically, typically, a structural engineer would say, yes, it was designed to the code. But if, if a structural engineer who knows about dynamics of structures, he would be able to judge whether this building is going to be like dancing during the activity that's going to be subject to, or it's going to be more or less not transmitting significant vibration. So I, I would say, yes, this is kind of a typical response that we get, but it, it shouldn't be the case. If, if the structural who is doing the design for the building knows about structural dynamics, he would be able to look into the issue and provide, like, I would say, a very reasonable estimate on whether it's going to be an issue or not. But I'm, I'm okay with the, like, conditioning on vibration and noise.
Okay. Okay. Thank you, so Vice Chair Shanda? Oh, so now, so now, based on that, so I'd like to make a motion to grant on condition. Oh, so now, so now based on that, so I'd like to make a motion to grant on condition, um, that the, uh, PC shall present no noise or vibration issues to building tenants.
Okay, so Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Okay, okay. All right. Item number, move on?
Yeah.
Item number eleven, ten seventy-eighty-four BZ two thirty-four East Fifty-Eighth Street, Manhattan.
Okay. Um, there was nothing required to be submitted on this, so, and no condition, so I'd like to make a motion to grant.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Application is granted. This, deferrals, item number twelve, seven sixty-four fifty-six BZ two hundred dash oh-five Horace Harding Expressway, Queens.
Aye.
And withdrawals, item number thirteen, twenty nineteen, one seventy-six A, seventeen Eastern Parkway, Brooklyn.
Okay, this one, um, is being withdrawn for, we don't actually know the reason, but this was an appeal about the, um, musical use of the, the synagogue for music events, um, so they were withdrawing, so a motion to withdraw.
Chair Promata?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaveta's still absent, right? Item number fourteen, twenty nineteen, one seven-one BZ sixteen-ten, East Chester Road, the Bronx.
Okay, so I, what I, I'm always concerned about these kinds of withdrawals because can't tell whether effectively the applicant is like walking away from the BSA approval to continue then an illegal non-conforming use. Um, as I understand it, though, this is a vacant lot, um, that had a gas station on it, the use of which was discontinued and the tanks removed in twenty sixteen. So, um, so according to that, withdrawal will not require enforcement of a non-conforming illegal use at the site if that's the actual case. However, I would like both our counsel and, um, our compliance officer Ted Ricketts to notify DOB that they've, uh, requested a withdrawal, and therefore, um, you, you know, DOB should, has enforcement authority in case it's being used improperly. Um, this is a, what's the zoning district here? Um, this is an, well, it's a C two-two o- overlay of an R six with an M one-one. Um, it's just in a small part of the site.
Okay.
Actually, I can't see. Yeah, I think it's just a small part, yeah, M one-one is, um, like twenty feet of the site or thirty feet, and the balance is in the C two-two overlay. Okay. So a motion to.
Yeah. Motion to withdraw, Chair Promata?
Aye.
Chair, Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Otley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shaveta's absent, okay. Okay, continued hearing items, SOC calendar, item number fifteen, two oh-seven sixty-eight BZ, one fifteen fifty-eight Dunkirk Street, Queens. And we just got some photos.
Oh.
I think I forwarded, I, if, I forwarded to you? Oh, just you, I'm sorry, I think Daryl's.
Forward to everybody?
Sorry, I did it to you. Why I'd, I don't know why I do that. Um, sorry, Madam Chair, sorry, Commissioners.
Don't be sorry, you're, you're doing a lot, you're multitasking when you're on.
Yeah, Daryl and I did the same thing, unfortunately, sorry, Daryl.
Okay, so. Yes.
Yes.
Oh, oh, okay, so this changes a little bit of what I was gonna say, because I'm like, where are the photos?
All right, I just send it to everybody.
So I was going on and on and on about how we shouldn't even hear this, we should adjourn it because the one thing we asked for, we didn't get, which is photos of the side yard, and I don't understand, et cetera, et cetera. So, okay, so, good, perfect timing, um, now we need to look at the photos, everyone take a look. Um. But I really prefer that the timing not be quite so perfect as this. It needs to have been submitted on the submission dates, or at least a letter saying, you know, we couldn't take the photos on this day, we will submit the photos on that day, so we don't think that you're completely unresponsive to our comments. Um, which is why I was kind of going on and on, and I have to say that I was a little surprised because this particular applicant is usually extremely responsive to our comments, so it felt weird not to be getting what we wanted, so it's just looking like the side yard is completely clo- clean. Um, and there's even shrubs planted. Um, which we weren't sure if that was gonna be able to happen in time, because I actually listened to the hearing again, because I was like, am I crazy, didn't we just ask for photos? And the owner said, um, well, I'll try to get it clean, but I'm not sure I can do any of the work, which, and I agree, because normally you don't plant, um, until another, till the end of March, beginning of April, um, so maybe they actually planted just now. So it looks pretty good, okay, um. And let me just see, where's one other thing that's that? More photos, okay, all right, so let me just look at my notes that are confused. There we go. Um. Okay, so I was going on so much about the absence of photos and that we were going to, um, adjourn this, that I didn't have any other comments, so I know they submitted a, a proposed amendment to the lease. Um, I would recommend that they not use that exact language, but actually have a lawyer draft it because, um, it's very casual, and that's how you get in trouble with a lease, so that they really should have it done properly by a lawyer, but, um, they keep counting on this tenant not renewing, um, you can't, as we said at the last hearings, you cannot rely on a tenant moving out, the landlord is always responsible for the behavior of the tenant. Um, and so, those are my comments, so, um, Vice Chair Shonda.
Um, I, I think the, the applicant, the owner has been responsive, and they do, um, they've been trying their best in correcting the issue, and I, we have noticed that with every submission, they have been, um, trying to correct the matter and are more aware on than they may have been from any prior, uh, uh, board, uh, approvals, uh, what this action requires and what their responsibilities are. So I am satisfied with the, uh, with the steps that's been taken and, uh, will be, uh, willing to consider a conditional approval.
Mm-hmm, okay. Um, Commissioner Otley Brown?
I'm also satisfied that they're taking our concerns seriously, and the fact that they're gonna change the lease going forward that requires them to cease and desist, or anybody who takes over the site um, in the future will not use that side yard, I'm fine with this, and the conditions will hopefully take care of it going into the future.
Um, Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair, uh, I had two comments, one of them is done, uh, regarding the photos, just got them. The second one is regarding the, uh, lease, uh, close, that close that they would like to add, and I'm, I'm, I'm not sure, I, we got a copy of this lease close, and I'm not sure if they looked at it, but I would like some changes to be done. In addition, I would like recommend that any applicant submits to us, please, prove free, take a look. You don't feel well when we see stuff like that. Uh, on, on line one, uh, the clause says in order to ensure, I N S U R E, it should be E N S U R E. I was born from, in Egypt, I, I didn't like learn, uh, like real English until I was like sixteen, and I, I got that, so, please fix that. The second thing is, it says, uh, that the side parking lot at Dunkirk Street is permanently not used for open parking. Please, remove permanent, it should be either permanently or temporary, no open storage at all. We, we don't wanna, we don't wanna avoid our condition by like, if, if we send that, uh, compliance officer, officer there, and he sees some storage, they would say, oh, this is not permanent, we, our intention is to remove this tomorrow, but then our condition is actually mi- like, like meaningless.
Right.
Uh, on like one, two, three, four, fourth line, it says the tenant agrees that the side parking lot shall not be used for open storage, remove open, please. And, and this simple, that, that like pertains to and, please, it should be in, in a legal document, and I'm not an attorney, I believe it should be and, A N D, it, it shouldn't be that simple. Uh, it says side lot, I'm not sure, is this a side lot or side yard? I, I believe it should be side, side yard, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, it, it should say the side yard uh, only for parking vehicles, or shall be used only for parking vehicles. It, 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 it should be like, shall be or must be, something like that. Uh, on the, on the, like, the line after tenant shall execute and comply with all state comma federal and local laws, rules, orders, and grants. At any, not them, I'm not sure who's them, it should be at any time. If, if you look at that clause that is submitted, it says at any T I M, and that T is cap. So I'm not sure who's this guy, at any time. And, 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 and that's it.
Yes.
And also, yeah, sorry, uh, on the line after, non-compliance by the tenant with this clause, it shouldn't be our grounds for, it should say shall result in, like, it should be in a legal document, it should be crystal clear like that, shall result in, so if, if you get a tenant and, and he violates, you, you're gonna have to argue with him.
Right.
Grounds for, I don't know what is that, but that's, that's what I have.
Thank you, so you're absolutely right, um, it was clear this was written very casually with ampersands instead of ands. Uh, you know, this obviously not how you write a legal document, which is why I said that they should hire a lawyer to write this lease, um, addendum, uh, because, uh, you know, a tenant will defend itself against an addendum that's not clear, um, and will often win in the defense, and then I can, we can see a little bit, this landlord has been quite hesitant to enforce against the tenant, so in the interest of the landlord, it should be written very clearly and strongly, um, so, uh, clearly and strong, um, so that it is, uh, very super evident that if you violate this, an end of story, and, um, then the landlord can make a phone call and say you're in violation of the lease, you had, there could be a, 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 a one-week cure period or something like that, there's usually a cure in a lease, it's almost boilerplate. So, you know, upon notification of the landlord, you have five days to cure, after which time your lease will be terminated, something words to that effect, so, and there's no.
I agree, it should be.
Yeah.
It, it should be something like on the cure period, and it should be something on the frequency as well. Like if you do it for the first time, you can cure it in a week, but for a second time, it's over, or something like, it should be clear with a, with, with something that's legal. You shouldn't leave things for future interpretation.
Yes, that's a, that's a good point, so actually what I would like to do, since, um, this is, this case is still open, right, what I, I'd like to do is on, we can probably, we can close it, but I want them to submit something to council where we review the terms of the lease, so that it's very clear that all of those things have been taken care of, and we won't have someone doing, as you say, they, they fill it up to, on Monday, they're given notice on Friday, it takes that long for the landlord to find out, and then they have a week to cure, and then they cure, and then two weeks later, they fill it up on Monday, and this is just this never-ending struggle with the landlord, so you know, three strikes, you're out, or something like that, and in a, in a one-year period, or some, something to that effect, to make it very clear. Okay, thank you, that's super helpful. Um, so, yeah, so, and then I think we went through everybody, so, and Commissioner Sheta, okay, Shaveta, great.
Thank. Item number, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
Item number sixteen forty-two ninety-seven BZ ninety-three twenty Astoria Boulevard, Queens. Once again, this is still a review session.
Second, okay, um. Okay, at the last hearing, with respect to the area of the illuminated signage exceeding fifty square feet, it's closer to ninety-something square feet on each sign. We asked that the applicant provide us with the prior board information on the signs, um, to be sure that it was aware that the signs exceeded the C one district regulations. We didn't, we didn't receive that, instead, the applicant provided us with perforated DOB PW one sign applications um, that don't show the dimensions of the sign, or if they do, we can't see it because the attached drawings are completely illegible, so, um, and I don't know how that establishes anything, um, if the drawings are illegible, it has to do with what did the BSA approve, not what does DOB approve, because, um, DOB often approves things where they're interpreting it as an approval from BSA when it wasn't an approval from BSA. Um, so, the BSA nineteen ninety-seven drawings that are in the original application folder are also illegible in PDF form, which is part of the problem of scanning, um, onto a PDF, draw, going back to nineteen ninety-seven, though, we do have original drawings, um, which should be called up from archives, so we can actually see what the dimensions are. Um, so that's a instruction to applicant, get the drawings from archives. Um, this has been an ongoing issue for several hearings, and I'm not seeing it be resolved. Um, and I note that the buildings are now actually in a C one district, and under the C one, they don't, those signs do not comply with C one district regulations, so, yeah, and what I had said, uh, they're actually nearly double the allowable on the district regulations, and what I had said in the prior hearing was that, and, and I see this as sort of laziness on the part of the applicant and the applicant's, um, engineer or architect. DOB often looks at measurement of signs in different ways, and it's possible that the sign was measured in a different way to, so that the total area of the sign, surface area of the sign is less than what is being indicated today. So that's, I, you know, sometimes they'll look at just the individual letters, or they'll, they'll look at the, um, the negative spaces and not count the negatives. I, I don't know how they measure it, I don't know what the current measurement system is, but at the, at the outset, we need to just establish that BSA was aware that these signs far exceeded the C one regulations. Um, so, um, and in looking through the old materials, so, you know, sometimes what ends up happening is we get caught up in a subject, and we forget what we've been asking all along that hasn't been responded to. So because I was trying to figure out what's the history of these signs and looking through the old submissions, I, I actually saw that we've never gotten answers to things that we talked about at the beginning and repeated on other hearings, namely, I didn't, don't see the landscaping along the pre- residential property line, it was never resolved. The drawings show a couple of bushes and a couple. The drawings show a couple of bushes and a couple of trees, whereas the nineteen ninety-eight resolution called for a dense buffer along the residential property line. So those drawings must be amended to show actual buffer and planting. And then the plants have to be installed and it has to be done fast because we're in planting season now. So, um, so there was also a drainage issue um in discussion, so I'd like um Commissioner Sheta to. Review the, there were drainage drawings submitted. Um, I wanna, I would like Commissioner Sheta to review those and make sure he's satisfied. We also need an operational plan on the dumpster, which was. On observations always sitting outside of the building and not in its. Enclosure, um, though they submitted one photograph of it in its enclosure, but. Drive bys indicate it just sits outside until pickup, which is not the point of an enclosure. Um, I also would like clarified for the record in writing because we never got that. The extent to which the rezoning legalized certain of the waivers granted in the original application, so this was originally. In an R district and now it's in a C one district where um this use is permitted as of right. We, um, a zoning analysis, we never received anything in writing and a zoning analysis was submitted with the initial submission. Indicates a waiver for lot coverage is needed citing to the R district regulations, this is a C district, I don't believe there are. Lot coverage regulations could be wrong. Um, for for commercial in a C district, so, um, and I think. Um, and the only other noncompliance I see on that chart is for one, is uh for one side yard where the requirements are. Uh, zero or eight feet and this is five, so I I see where that might be the case. No parking calculations were provided, so I don't know whether they need a parking waiver. Um, the zoning chart needs to be redone to reflect the proper zoning resolution citations. For a C one three overlay in an R six B and for the information of the person preparing the drawings. You start and you stay in the C. In the commercial district regulations of the zoning resolution and you don't leave them. Unless the regulations tell you to do so, you don't go to the R district. Unless the regulations say, go to the R district for this information, you don't travel back and forth between them at will. Um, just because you don't see an entry in the C district, okay? On the new photometric data. They submitted, um. We, we talked a lot about how they was, were going to need to modify the lighting. Lighting uh fixtures and probably cut down or get rid of the pole. And what they did is they came back with a twenty foot high pole instead of a thirty foot high pole and um. And they claim that that's going to bring the lumens on the residential property line down to zero. Um, so my, my reaction to this is because we were very clear in our instructions. That it maybe it's a wait and see with with actual field testing because they're still showing. That um there is six point four lumens just off the property line. And then it drops down magically to zero on the, on the property line, so that has not been um. Let's say the case in the past, um, in in most of the times that we're looking because. Uh, if the photometric data is showing that. Um, the lumen spread from that pole is going all the way from one end of the property to the other. Then I'm not sure how a light shield is going to keep that. To zero for a twenty foot high pole and when we looked at the photographs. Um, that were very helpfully provided at night, you can see that whole side of that house being lit up. By that thirty foot high pole, so. A lot of our discussion at the last hearing, which I listened to on video, was not really believing that a. A pole was the solution and that they should really be mounting these lights to either. The fence or the building and then there was some discussion about not mounting it to the fence because they would have to provide new power. Et cetera, et cetera, and we said, provide new power if that's what it takes, so. I'm not really um believing that this is gonna work, but if they want to spend the money. We can't stop them from spending the money, but they'll have to go back and take field readings to prove that it's working. Okay, so those are my comments, um Vice Chair Shonda.
Thank you, um. Yes, it's been a little bit frustrating um with this application, I think the sign issue. When we had raised it at the uh at the onset, uh when um. When Commissioner Artley Brown raised it, uh, the applicant had provided the, I I think the similar set of drawings. And uh if I recollect at that time, we hit it, it's not, it's not very clear, please uh please clarify it. Understandable, oftentimes the drawings that one gets uh from the archive or 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 that's in file. And you're copying it over the years, things become not that legible, but. At least that can be clearly narrated also. Uh, of what the history was, what was permitted and I, it's, it is frustrating that those. Those steps were not taken. Um, and those are very easily done and clarified, so uh. Um, I hope that can be resolved. And just walk us through the history of what was granted. With change in the rezoning, what is then permitted and how and what the current, uh, how the current sign. Meets or does not meet on there or does, is it therefore grandfathered based on that, I don't know. But tha- that's the, that's what we are really looking for. Uh, and I also am concerned about the lumen analysis that's been provided, but I think that. Uh, maybe we give a short leash. And uh, and if the lumen study after a few years comes back still high, then they have to change it. Um, and that should be part of the condition uh in our approval, um, as we go through it, that's all.
So I I just wanna jump in on the short leash leash after a few years. Um, if I lived in that house and I can read without turning the light on at night. I can't wait a few years, I don't know how long this has been going on, but all I can think of is total misery. So.
I, I agree.
Yeah, okay. Um, Commissioner Ali Brown.
I agree with you Chair about the lighting, I just couldn't see how it could be six point four on the interior side of the lot line and then just dropped to zero. So I think they should definitely do testing once they install it.
And on the signage?
Oh, I agree, they should definitely provide the drawings that show that the B S A was aware previously.
And Commissioner Sheta, thank you.
Thank you Chair, uh, I start with the drainage that they, they haven't submitted drainage drones before. They submitted a grading plan and they said the catch basin was cleaned. And since then, no flooding was reported. I I cannot judge. Their, their performance of of a proposed drainage system or the existing drainage system. Because I I don't have like a formal drainage uh design in front of me. But I would say if if the system was performing okay before. And a clogging happened, it's likely that flooding okay on site, if this, if this clogging is is removed. And the basings and the pipes were clean. And and the grading plan is is done correctly, I I believe it should, the drainage system should reperform. As intended again and and it shouldn't be an issue of flooding, but I leave this. Uh, to them to make sure that the, like that existing. Drainage system is, has not deteriorated in in such a way that it need to be replaced. Or like substantially repaired. So based on the drainage plan they provided, I believe the drainage system should should be okay. The drainage step slopes, I would say, the slopes should be okay and if they have installed. Originally, they have installed that uh. Adequate drainage system. It should be fine, the side drainage wise should be fine. That the second issue I I have is the lighting. And and I, when I looked at the luminous spread. The, this case is 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 making me dizzy because I I recall that at the very beginning. They were insisting on the very tall pools and then. They said we'll cut them and then we went back to the pool. Pools without cutting and now they are saying they gonna be like limiting the heights of some of the pools. They submitted a very nice diagram, but it's just a very nice. Nice looking, I would say, it's, it's, it's a very nice looking one. But it's technically. I I have tons of issues with with this kind of diagram, number one, alphabetics. When you submit luminous spread and and and. I'm not an architect, I I haven't, I never done a lighting study before. Joining this board, but I I, like I said, I know physics and and this lighting diagram is kind of a combination. Of different lighting units that if if I just have one lighting. I I wouldn't do any that, I just can go to the manufacturer and ask him for a single uh pool. Light spread and he can give me that and I can look at it. And I'm done, but because we're combining different lights. The analysis need to be done and 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 the starting point for that analysis. Is to bring on the lumen spread for a single light pool. Or for every different model of a single light pool and then give them to the software. And give the software the locations and the heights and then the software. Start playing with that using the physics rules and then produce the luminous spread that we are looking for. And and looking at and and sometimes. You, you, it it could be accurate, sometimes it couldn't and and like that. Like the final uh decision on any lighting should be measurements. And and like taking the account, taking into account the history of this case. I wouldn't, I wouldn't be satisfied with with like moving forward granting anything. On this case without measurements. And and we don't have to wait so long, actually, I, in their submission. And I'm reading from page two on the March fourth twenty twenty-one submission. It says, after saying attach it, please find the proposed lighting photometric. That was created, it says the fixture has been ordered.
Right.
We bought them and it says and Walgreen plans to install it as soon as they are delivered. Unfortunately, the fixture is set to arrive on March twenty-nine, a week from now. So let's say they get them in a week, they put them in another week or two weeks. If we give it another shot. Let's say a month or or forty-five days from now. They should be ready with measurements, with a plan based on measurements because I have no confidence. In the plan they submitted for the following reasons. Luminous spreads are are like dropping significantly abruptly. That that diagram gives tons of very nice tables, like I said, very nice looking tables, but look at the table that says luminar. Location summary. Lumen number three, four, five, two, twelve, there is no one two. And then it gives the, the symbol that's that point to that uh lighting unit and then X Y Z refers to what? Who knows, where is, where is X, where is Y, where are the reference X E's? To to these lights, I I don't know and and why I'm talking about this, because this is how you input. Your data to the software and then orientation, orientation with what? Is it with north, with south, with X, with Y, I have no idea, tilt zero, tilt to what, again, it's. Same thing, so I'm afraid that whoever took the information for these lighting units and gave them to the software. Like I said before, garbage in, garbage out, if you put something bad. You get something bad, I'm not saying that this diagram is bad. But I'm saying that the lack of like information, the lack of explanation. On this diagram makes me skeptical that it's done correctly and I would rather wait until they get us. Uh, measurements in accordance with the administrative notice that we issued earlier.
Yes, great. Okay, thank you. Um, I think we got everybody, okay, and Commissioner Shetan is out, okay. New cases, item number seventy ninety-two ninety-nine. B C ninety-four ninety-six ninety-eight, one hundred and one oh two ninety-nine B C. Ninety-eight oh nine ninety-eight twenty-five ninety-eight forty-one sixty-fourth road. Ninety-eight fifty-one ninety-eight thirty-three ninety-eight nineteen sixty-fourth avenue, Queens. Okay, so we have proof of service of initial application out of notice of hearings to officials. Um, community board has not provided a recommendation and we see from a. An email in the file that the applicant reached out to them. I wanna note, I'm not sure if it's true in every folder, but I wanna note that the revised statement of facts. The most recent one is in the void folder and needs to be repositioned into the main application folder, I hope commissioners were able to find it. When I can't find something, I look everywhere, so I found it in void, it may not be the case in every folder. Um, I think the statement of facts fails to cite the rule for requesting an extension of time to obtain a seat certificate of occupancy. For transient parking, it is one dash oh seven point one A three. Five, although it does request a waiver of the rules with respect to the filing period to apply. Um, to do so almost ten years after um it was required to. The two thousand resolution and the then cited D O B objection. Cites both to a waiver of M D L sixty. Um, sub paragraph three and to z- zoning resolution section twenty-five dash four twelve. Um, there was a corrective resolution issued on the same date for the same pri- properties. With slightly different waiver waivers, that needs to be explained in the statement of facts and. Um, also in the future resolution to clear this up for future boards who are reviewing this. It appears, but it isn't clear that the D O B's objection was amended to reflect only noncompliance with M D L section sixty. Paragraph one B and the variance was granted pursuant to B S A's authority under M D L section sixty, paragraph three. So I I think part of the confusion um is that uh. Sixty, paragraph three is simply the board's authority to waive the the multiple dwelling law. Whereas the section that's being waived is section sixty, paragraph one B, so our. Our resolution needs to clarify exactly what's being waived, okay, and what our authority is under the M D L. Um, I do have to admit, though, there's this use of the word surplus parking spaces. Um, that I don't understand and I don't actually think should travel, I see Carla's hand up. Um, and the board, because it's not actually surplus spaces, the board was asked to allow more. It's not that the board was asked to allow more spaces that are, than are permitted on the zoning lot as of right. They were only asked to allow up to that number of spaces listed to be used transiently. So we should take out the word surplus, I don't think that's accurate, it's just limiting. To whatever the number was, I think it was fourteen and twenty-one spaces, that amount to be used transiently. Um, I'd like them, the applicant, to provide copies of the P W one and certificate of occupancy applications. For the four open properties that still don't have their C O because it's going on far too long without a C O. And um, though photos show them, um, the recapture signs in place in. One location, more locations, whatever, it 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 doesn't. Explain where those recapture signs were taken, so it's just maybe one recapture sign for all of the buildings and that can't be. So we actually need photos of each recapture sign um tied to the building. Um, address, okay, um, and those were my comments, um, Carla, did you still wanna say something?
No, Manich, I believe you addressed the question on surplus.
Okay, okay. All right, so then Vice Chair Shonda.
Thank you, uh, my comments are very similar, um, it is, um. The, the photos should be key to the plans, um, and since we have four applications. Uh, it would be helpful um to tie to each one of those plans um accordingly. Um, the proposed total signage, there's a little. Um, the proposed total signage, there's a little bit of a calculation or it's a typo maybe. The proposed total signage uh s- uh surface area calculation seems to be incorrect. Uh, it says, um, when you look at um the drawings, it says additional signage number three on block two, one, zero, one uh is uh six point six, seven square feet. Uh, and the total signage on block two, one, zero, one is thirty six point five c- uh five, seven. Uh, it there, it seems to be less than um uh the approved uh total is forty three square feet. And the sign number three will result in an increase because that was not there in the previous. So I don't know why the total signage then drops from forty three to thirty six. So I I think there's some correction that needs to be looked at. Also, sign number five on B S A drawing number oh, oh, four. Is it the same as sign number four on uh drawing B S A oh, oh, two on block two, one, oh, one? Um, so somewhere it says in the drawing site plan of uh sign number four, but in the signage sheet, it's listed as five. So I think that's just a correction. Um, each building has a ramp accessway from the street level to the cellar. Now, it seems not all of them are designated for public access. So I would like to know what these other ramps are being used for. Are they even in operation? And are they only exit signs? Um, it would be, um, and as I mentioned, it would be helpful for the photos to be keyed into the plan, especially the signage.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Brown?
I only had one question and that was the similar to yours about the recapture signs. It should be evident that there's one in each building that's in a place where tenants can clearly see it. Should they need to claim a a parking space?
Um, Commissioner Sheta?
Thank you, Chair. Nothing further from me.
Okay. Okay, that concludes, anyone else?
No.
Okay, so that concludes the public review session. We'll now commence with the public hearing. So, okay, so now we're at the public hearing for March twenty second, twenty twenty one, ten A M. And the first item is SOC calendar continued hearing items, item number fifteen, two oh seven sixty eight B Z, one fifteen fifty eight Dunkirk Street, Queens.
Good morning, uh, Sandhya Agnostu and the applicant.
Morning.
Uh, I heard the comments that there.
I have to sway you in, Miss Agnostu.
I'm sorry, have to be sworn in.
Yes. Um, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to the board member questions?
I do.
Okay, please proceed.
I heard the comments earlier in the review session. Uh firstly, we did submit photographs on March third. My office submitted them. I don't know what happened, why they weren't received, but I'm I'm glad that you were able to see them today. The site was cleaned and um the landlord, Mr. Green, is um I think he he clearly understands how serious the situation is and he's doing uh everything he can to keep it clean. And uh one of the things was to provide a clause which would be in in added to the lease. Um, and I heard the comments regarding that as well from Commissioner Sheta and Madam Chair. Um, so I advised uh Mr. Green to retain an attorney to actually prepare this legal document, which once it's ready, we will submit to B S A counsel for review. Um. And uh we'll 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 relay all the comments that were discussed today to that attorney as well to make sure that whatever the document is preparing will satisfy all of your concerns.
Great. Great. So can I ask you a question about the photos? Did you end up resubmitting them this morning?
Yes.
They were submitted March third?
Yeah, I don't know. Sometimes things might get kicked back, maybe when they're large files. But I usually get a notice and then I'll submit it, will my office will submit it through Dropbox or something like that. But it's strange. I did not receive any like notice or anything.
Plus, it was only.
It went through.
It was only a few photos. That shouldn't be too large of a file.
Yeah, usually you get a sub, uh, you usually get a receipt from submit that says we've accepted, we have your submission and we'll let you know if there's anything.
Or I get something like um from my, from uh Outlook that it uh undeliverable or something like that. If it's a huge file, but we didn't see anything like that.
You know what I would suggest? I mean, this is really what I would do in your place all the time. I would send to submit, just like you're doing where you C C also the project manager. But because you had an attachment and you never really sure about whether it's successful, then send an email to the project manager saying, I submitted the following documents this morning. Um, please confirm that you received them.
Oh, separately.
Yeah, separately, without an attachment. So that, yeah, that's what I would do to just make sure. Um, because in this case, for instance, I'm happy I didn't have to read my harangue about how I we only thing we wanted was photos and we didn't get them.
Right. That was the most important item you were waiting for, right?
Right, right. Okay, thank you. We really do appreciate so much the cooperation of both your steady work on this and the cooperation of the owner to move this along. Um, so uh any comments from commissioners? Okay, so then let's go to the public. The application we're currently discussing is two oh seven sixty eight B Z, one fifteen fifty eight Dunkirk Street, Queens. It's an extension of term. If you're calling in, it is six four six five five eight eight six five six. Zoom webinar ID number is nine one three five nine eight one one eight two one. Passcode is two six six nine six three. If you are in Zoom room, you press star nine to raise your hand and star six to unmute. Okay, so while we wait to see whether there's anyone who would like to speak on this. Um, there are some names in the waiting room. So if you'd like to speak on this, please raise your Zoom hand. Otherwise, so Miss Agnostu, um, how much time do you think? So I don't know whether your your uh client already has a sort of in the wings all the time, a lawyer available to draft something like this, or whether they actually have to go out and seek counsel. So what they should be doing is preparing um a an addendum that that as we said, picks up all of the points. Um, but I'd like it to be submitted to our council to our review. So a little bit of a turnaround. So I'm kind of guessing you need a a month. Um.
I believe he has an attorney, um, but a month is, I think, more than enough time.
Okay, great. So that's what we'll do then. So I don't see any any hands up and no one.
Do you want to close?
Yeah, yeah. So give me a second. Okay, so hold on one second. Four weeks. So then, thank you very much again. Please extend your thanks to the property owner also. Um, and to you for being so responsive and apologies that for some reason we didn't get your photos. So um, okay, so then I'd like to make a motion to close. Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Chanda?
Aye.
Commissioner Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta? Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is item number sixteen, forty two ninety seven B Z, ninety three twenty Astoria Boulevard, Queens. This is Mr. Metzner. Can you see there? Oh. The last time we had Mr. Rideberg on, but I don't see him in the waiting room. Okay, it's just Mr. Metzner. Yeah. So Alexis, Alexis, Alexis is not there.
Hello, good morning. Can you hear me?
Good morning. Yeah, um, do you want to, you expecting anyone else?
Yes, I'm expecting uh Alexia Landisman and Eric Lloydberg. And then Michael Gattalov is the architect. If they haven't signed on yet, let me begin.
Alexi is here. We do have Miss Landsman, so that's so far all. And if you're in the waiting room and you would like to speak on this application as part of the team, please raise your Zoom hand. Maybe we missed your name. Okay, go ahead. I sway you in. Marvin?
Sure.
Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to the board member questions?
I do.
Please proceed.
Okay, so we attended the executive session and heard the board's comments. I'll take them uh as I've heard them in order. Um, first, with regard to the sign issue, we researched the uh applications filed in connection with the sign. Um, we've looked at all the documents at D O B regarding the sign and I think we submitted a perforated uh P W one for the signage as well as the plans that went along with that P W one. Uh, as you mentioned, the the plans are not very legible. Um, the part that is legible or partially legible, we can tell you has three digits. So we know that the total signage is over a hundred square. You're shaking your head, but it that's that's the best I could tell. Um, in any event, the um uh we we've we've done what we can to research it. We'll we uh we've we've picked up the the microfiche files. We've we've spoken to your staff, Mar- Marissa and Manny uh earlier on to try to get what they had. They sent us the PDF files, which once again were not particularly legible. Um, I don't know if at that time they were able to go into archives physically because of COVID and obtain anything, but we'll tr- reach out to them again to see if they can do that now. I don't know.
Right.
Perhaps you know better.
So so the way that it works is um the archive will send a box to our office at twenty two Reed and then one of your staff, if that's permitted, I'm not really sure whether we're allowing that or not, would have to go through the box. So I suppose the box is just put in a room. Yeah, go ahead, Carlo.
Yeah, hi, Madam Chair. Yes, we we um, in addition to uh delivering the box to the office, which we have limited uh visitation uh abilities at this time, we can on request have the entire case file scanned.
But I think they did that, Carlo.
No, that that's not helpful, Carlo, because the the drawings are illegible. You cannot read the scan. So it it doesn't answer the question, which is one reason we really need to hold on to original documents or never not scan, you know, everything has to be translated direct from a PDF, from a uh digital drawing directly to the PDF as opposed to a scan. But in the late nineties, of course, there were paper submissions, so they wouldn't be scanned. So the scan is not useful in this case or in most because it washes out all the numbers and what we're looking for is actually the numbers. So so can you explain what you do when you deliver the archive box to the office?
Yeah, no, Manny is. You're good, Tony.
Well, no, uh, once the file, once the archive file is received at the office, uh a manual recorded and then he'll reach out to the applicant to set up some sort of arrangement to view the file. We're doing on a very limited basis, very limited basis. If that's a necessity to have it done. We were scanning them. That's the option we were doing because of the COVID. And I guess it didn't come clear enough. So um that's the other option we'll have to do and we'll make arrangements. Manny will make arrangements to have him review the file.
Right. So what we can do is just have the box put into a room and your staff person would go to the box and um and pull the file. Um, and then, you know, how, you know, in terms of scanning, hopefully the either taking a photograph, which might be even better.
Yeah.
Right? And or a photocopy of it as opposed to a scan where it loses so much definition. Um, might might be a way of solving that.
Okay, well, we'll we'll look into that and make whatever arrangements we have to. We'll make ourselves available anytime to come down and take a look at the file.
Okay.
All right, and then we'll hopefully resolve the signage issue because no doubt the board approved signage since there are applications filed and approved by D O B, as well as the B S A approved drawings show signage and shows and shows a horizontal dimension for that signage. Once again, not particularly legible, but it's there. All right, uh, next, the the you mentioned about the landscaping along the property line. We do, we do have drawings that show landscaping. Um, it shows exist, it shows existing landscaping as well as additional landscaping.
I I didn't find any drawings that show along the residential property line more than two bushes and two trees. And we talked about um a a dense buffer along the residential property line. So if there's a drawing somewhere, please, uh, where, when was it submitted? Because every time I looked at a set of drawings, it showed two bushes and two trees.
Okay, well, we will, we will, we will present a a clearer uh uh plan which shows greater greater density along the property line.
Okay, so let's, it's, I I know, I I hear your words. I don't want greater density. That could be four bushes. It has to create a dense buffer of minimum of, at the time of planting, four feet high to grow to eight foot high shrubs. It's a five foot wide planting bed. It was created that way so that it would allow for a dense buffer. So that's not four shrubs. It goes all the way along the residential property line as indicated on the originally approved drawings and and apparently never installed like that.
Okay, as I said, we'll take a look at that and provide a buffer that hopefully will meet your satisfaction.
A dense buffer of minimum at at planting four foot high. I don't want to, so we're not confused. We're not negotiating, right? So dense.
I wasn't negotiating.
Close together.
I was writing it down.
Okay, okay. I want to just make it clear so that when I look at my own notes and I don't say, am I crazy? Why am I only seeing two more bushes when I'm sure if I remember that I told him a dense buffer planted close together? So allow for the the plantings to grow to a minimum of eight feet high like that, okay? And the standard approach, which is not necessarily the preferred one, the standard is arbor vidai. But I've also seen privates used. There's lots of other things that work really well, but they have to be evergreens. Okay?
Okay. Uh, you you then went and mentioned the drainage issue, which I think Commissioner Shetter responded to or commented on. Uh, the drainage was simply a matter of having the uh the drainage system clog and it wasn't draining properly. And once we cleaned that out and fixed it up, we've never had a drainage problem since. The uh, the dumpster is kept.
I'm sorry, don't you have like a like a plan for the drainage system that's in place? Do you have that?
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
Do you have a plan for the drainage system that's in place?
Uh, we provided you with um
A grading plan.
Grading plan.
Yes, a grading plan is not a drainage plan. I'm I'm
I don't know.
Looking at it.
I can't answer that. I don't know if we have a drainage plan. All I tell you is we provided a grading plan which shows proper grading and that this facility has been around for many, many years and we only had a problem with the drainage. And we only had a problem with the drainage when there was a clog condition in the system. And since that clog condition was removed and cleaned up and corrected, there's been no drainage issue.
Okay, but let's just say, in order to install those dry wells and so on, someone had to have prepared a drainage plan. Otherwise, you wouldn't have gotten a permit for the dry wells. So dig up from your files, the drainage plan, and then you can just submit it and see.
Okay, that's fine.
There is no dry well, there is nothing on the, this is a grading plan. If you look, let's take a look at this. This is like a spot elevations with some contours. So that line means this is contour 40. This spot here is elevation 40.29. This is 40.99. So it shows me that water is going to go from here to here, from here to here. And then it's going to go from this spot to that spot because this is 39.54. But from here, where it's going to go, it should be a dashed line or something mentioning that this catch basin or this floor drain connects to what and via what? Is it a PVC pipe? Let me zoom more. This is a catch basin. And it shows the spot elevations all around. And it shows that this catch basin elevation is 39.54, indicating that water is going to flow when it drains, when it rains, water is going to flow on ground to the catch basin. That's good. But from this point and moving forward, I have no idea what's going to happen. Whether you have a four inch pipe, six inch pipe, it should be a growing that's showing that. And I cannot see here.
As I mentioned, as I mentioned to the chair, we will ask for a drainage plan and try to get that from the owner.
Okay, good.
That sounds good, thank you.
Okay. The next issue that you raised was the dumpster. We've shown photos of the dumpster inside that enclosure. That's where the dumpster is kept, is taken out for garbage pickup. I think in a prior submission, we gave you a schedule of that. So you should have that.
I didn't actually see the schedule. I saw a photo showing it in place, but I didn't see an operational plan schedule. Maybe, you know, we have a lot of.
I can speak to that, I'm sorry. I think we mentioned the schedule in one of the cover letters when we submitted the picture, but we can clarify and send in an operational schedule for you.
Great, so it should be an operational plan so that it's very easy for us to identify it in the submission, and then our council can refer to it in the resolution, okay?
Fine. And then you had some questions about the zoning analysis and how we identified what remains from the original variance grant. We'll check over our prior submissions. I thought we had explained that, but if not, we'll re-explain it in clearer language so you can understand what remains from the original grant.
Okay, so there never was a written submission of what it is we're continuing to waive. We only talked about it at the hearings, and there was a guess that maybe it was parking. But there's no parking calculation shown on the drawings. And there's no, or on the, I don't know if it's on the B S A zoning sheet, but I needed to be consistent. So you have a set of zoning calculations on the drawing set, which needs to include parking calculation. And I do believe that the citations to the zoning resolution are traveling back and forth between the commercial district regulations and the residential district regulations. And the correct way to cite to residential district regulations when you're in a commercial overlay district is you read the section in the commercial overlay that tells you, go to the residential section 22 whatever, whatever, or 23 whatever, whatever. So that you shouldn't be traveling there on your own because that leads to confusion. I didn't find lot coverage, but it's true that I didn't spend a lot of time looking.
All right, well, okay, well, the zoning resolution takes you down the path of going back and forth, and we'll follow that path.
Right, but so whenever it sends you to the residential district regulation, cite the section in the commercial regulations that sends you there. Don't assume you have to go unless it sends you there specifically, okay?
We'll be more, we'll be clear on that, clear on that issue.
Okay.
Can I jump in on this one? I was, while this discussion was going on, I was also looking through the statement of findings and facts just to kind of see what has been stated. That needs to be improved significantly, given all the discussions we have had. Lighting is absolutely silent in this whole discussion, so is the signage. And as Madam Chair mentioned about the history of the waiver that was asked, what was granted and how relevant and applicable that is under the current zoning regulation. It is absolutely not clear from the documents that I'm reading right now. So while individual separate documents are going to be provided to respond to those questions, the statement also needs to be all corrected and put together accordingly.
Understood.
Thank you very much. And by the way, when you submit a cover letter, don't just say, attach please find statement of facts. What is it that was changed in each of these documents so that we can know that all of these issues have been addressed? What's concerning me about this application is we focus on one thing, and then the applicant team pretend, let's say assumes because we didn't talk about it this time. We're not pretend, assumes. That because we didn't talk about it this time, it's no longer an issue. It's always an issue. And we read through our notes and say, on the eve of closing or on the eve of voting, we say, wait a minute, these were open issues. Now we have to reopen because you never addressed those issues. So please, just because we don't talk about it at a particular hearing doesn't mean it's not still an active concern. And if we talk about it in the review session, it's an active concern unless at the hearing we say, never mind about that thing. We have to actively say, never mind about the thing which we have not done today, okay? Just to be clear.
Never say, never mind.
Okay. Occasionally, I say, never mind, but maybe not on your case, okay?
Also, we actually have, we also have Eric on the line here, who's the lighting specialist that Walgreens hired. And I think he can speak a little bit more to the photometrics that were submitted.
Let me swear him in. Let me swear him in, raise your right hand. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board and to respond to the board member questions?
I do.
Proceed.
So I listened to these statements earlier today. The recommendation was to install the lighting and then take a post installation light level readings. That can definitely be done and done in a short amount of time. That install will happen here within the next two weeks, for sure. And then we can take the post readings. Just clarification on the light level readings and how they were calculated. That was done through a system called A G I. And the reason we did the entire, all of the light fixtures versus just that one, I know that was a comment that was brought up was because we want to make sure that the entirety of the lighting system there does not create any trespass past that line next to that neighbor. So we can definitely install that light and then take readings and report back on our findings.
But just out of curiosity, because we often see these kinds of lumen spread diagrams where two feet away from the property line, it's a number like six lumens. And then magically, two feet later is zero. How does that work when a shield can only go do so much, right? It's not like the shield is, yeah, right. The shield can only do so much, right?
Yep, agreed. A lot of it is with the new LED technology and just the point source of light. All of this fixture is made to only throw light forward. And so in the days of H I D with a reflector, you couldn't control the light as much. With LED, it's very controllable in where you put that light. And obviously, right in front of that pole, you have not only that pole's contribution, but there's wall packs along that wall on the store, right in front of that store. So that in front of that pole in that area is going to be one of the brighter spots within that lot. But by cutting that pole down 10 feet to 20 feet, by putting a back shield on it and by using a different light fixture, we're able to push that light forward and not have any light go backwards. You will see that in the prior submissions, there were two fixtures on that pole. We cut it, we reduced it to one and changed the lighting throw of that fixture to maximize the efficiency of it.
In that system that you use to analyze the spread of the lumens, you are able to control how much shedding from a specific light source and in which direction? You impose this as a boundary condition on the software, am I correct?
No, we're able to, we're not able to like cut off the the actual lumen throw on a software. We can only apply the fixture to the software and any shielding. We can't manipulate the software to show a boundary line and say, we don't want any light past this. We have to input all the fixture information, and it tells us where the light's going to go.
When you say, like, define the shielding or so, does that mean that the software has like a built-in library for different kind of shielding? And you go say, I have such and such light picture with this kind of shielding? Is this the case?
Kind of, the manufacturers, the manufacturers list the different options that are available with the fixture, and they have all of the photometric spreads that that light fixture with the different options will give you. And so we pick that and put that into the software, and then it runs its calculations on as far as where the light's going to go.
Understood. And the X, Y, and Z that you provided in the table, these are kind of the coordinates for each light fixture?
To be honest, I can't speak to X, Y, and Z. I don't have it right in front of me. So I don't know what that refers to.
Bear with me one second. I'm talking about this. This is like the schedule for different fixtures. You gave them an identification, number and letter, and then we have X, Y, and Z and orientation and tilting. Is that kind of like, I believe this is kind of like the input to the software, am I correct?
Yes, and the orient is the orient to the pole. So 180 degrees to the pole or 90 degrees to the pole. Yes, and the X, Y, and Z is the coordinates of that, yes.
Bear with me, for this guy, what is the orientation?
90.
So it's to the X axis, actually. So I would say for this guy, it's 90, for this guy, it's 0 or 180, am I correct?
I would assume so. I'm not the one that actually creates it, but I would assume you're correct there. The person that creates this has, you know, 20 plus years of lighting design. But I assume that's right. We typically don't include that, but he probably included it just because of this case and to make sure that it was very thorough in what we're providing.
Okay.
That B three is that's.
Okay, go ahead, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
That one fixture that we're placing is that second line item. It's B three is the fixture label there.
Okay, the A, B, C, and so on, right?
Right, yep, the Cs are the wall pack.
Yeah, this is, yes, I checked that. It is consistent with the diagram. But I was, I wasn't sure which one is the tilt and which one is the orientation and what does they mean and where is that X and Y reference point? But anyway, since you're going to be doing the measurements, all what we're going to need to like see is for a single light pool, you have like different models. You have A and B, and you have C and P. So for every one of these, we're going to need to get the cut sheet, even with the measurement, so we can get some sort of idea. When you provide us with measurements, I can pick like an isolated one where no interference is going to have, like this guy. If I look at this guy supposedly, that lumen spread is going to be close to a single light because there is no interference between the, there is no interaction between these two light pools. Same thing here and here. But I understand for these two, it's going to be some sort of interaction between them. So I would like to get the, like the single pool spread diagram from the manufacturer, what we call it the cut sheet. And please attach that to the draw.
That can be done.
Thank you.
Okay, anything else?
I believe we've covered all your questions.
Okay, all right, so then let's go to the public. Haley. The case that we're discussing currently is 4297 B Z, 9320 Storya Boulevard, Queens. It's an extension of term. You are calling in at 646-558-8656. Zoom webinar ID number is 913-5981-1821. Passcode is 266963. If you're in the Zoom room, please raise your hand by pressing star nine. And if you're on the phone, it's star six to unmute. Okay, so how much time to to do this work? So.
We're looking probably about six weeks.
Okay. So that includes installing the lights and then doing the diagram, right?
That's correct.
Just to avoid back and forth, you were aware about of the administrative notice for lighting measurements, right? It's not just going to be like measuring lights during putting all the lights off. You have to like put the lights off, measure whatever is coming from adjacent properties and then put the lights on and follow this procedure, please.
Yeah, we're aware of the administrative knowledge.
That's good. I just wanted to avoid like delaying your case, thank you.
Understood.
Appreciate that. Okay, so I'm noting six weeks to submit. Don't forget a landscape plan showing the dense buffering.
Four feet high.
Four feet high, a time of planting, growing to eight feet. Evergreen trees, dense, close together like that. Drainage plan, if it exists, we assume it must exist. And update the zoning calculation sheets and the statement of facts to represent all of these things that we've been talking about. And of course, the lighting and the operational plan on the dumpster. And of course, going to the archives. Okay, so you should request the archives right away because it takes some time to receive them, okay?
We'll do.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Tony, I just want to note that the, so we're done with, we're moving on to the next question. I just want to note that the Hook Creek Boulevard, we have information from fire department and the updated site plan. So we. Right, I was going to ask you after, did you want to do it after the continued or the new? I don't know. We can, why don't we do it now so we don't forget? Want to recall it? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so are we reopening it or anything? Because you. No, we don't need to. It's just we, we had deferred decision because we didn't get a sign off from fire department, which we now have. So why don't you call it? So I am now recalling item number nine on the calendar, decision item 2020-3A-14218, Hook Creek Boulevard, Queens. We received a revised site plan as per the commissioner's request for a note and the fire department sign off. Yes, so they say, based upon the foregoing, department has no objection to the above referenced application, and it understands all legal requirements shall be complied with. And that's their sign off today, okay? So then, based on that, and I did see the note on the drawing, so I would like. The D O B to look, yeah. Yeah, the D O B to review the. Right? Okay, so I would like to make a motion to grant on the condition that, or let's say, with the understanding that B S A takes no. That, um, or let's say with the understanding that BSA takes no position on the legality of the zoning lots of the. Of the tax and zoning lots subdivision. And defers to DOB to review the subdivision with respect to proposed and existing structures on the lots. Okay? So with that, um, I'd like to make a motion to grant.
Chair Promoter?
Aye.
Vice Chair Shonda?
Aye.
Commissioner Hartley Brown?
Aye.
Commissioner Sheta?
Aye.
Commissioner Shabeta?
Aye.
Okay. So now, new cases, item number seventeen. Ninety-two ninety-nine B C ninety-four ninety-six ninety-eight one hundred and one oh two ninety-nine B C ninety-eight oh nine ninety-eight twenty-five. Ninety-eight forty-one, sixty-fourth Road. Ninety-eight fifty-one, ninety-eight thirty-three, and ninety-eight nineteen sixty-fourth Avenue, Queens.
If you're here for this application, please raise your hand in Zoom.
Good morning.
Or if you're on the telephone, please press star nine.
How do I do that?
Oh, you're in the Zoom, David.
I thought so. Good morning.
Good morning. Who else is with you? Mr. Hirschman and Charles Walkeal?
That's correct.
Peter Hirschman's here.
Peter Hirschman, stranger, how are you?
Hello, Tony. Commissioners, morning.
Okay, uh, raise your right hands, um, if you can video, but not. Do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board? And to respond honestly to board member questions?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please proceed, Mr. Schnackenberg.
Just a quick point of order. Was Charles also sworn in? Charles, can you make sure that you're here?
Yeah, he was, he was sworn in.
Yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, I did.
I can now.
All right.
Um, so uh, thank you, everyone. Um, good morning. Hope everyone's doing okay. We uh, it's comments this morning. And um, we'll go through them quickly and then we'll address any other questions you have. Um. Uh, the Madam Chair, your your initial comment was that we failed to cite the rule in our papers. Is that um? You mean strictly that we did not provide like a. A restatement of rule. It's one oh seven, one, eight, three, uh, sub five. You'd like us to include that in our statement?
Right, because you went through all the rules. And so I'm like, well, where's that rule? So let's throw that one in.
Got it. Um, we will amend the statement as follows. Um, the next question that you raised was uh, whether the um. Just to clarification, the resolutions, I believe, whether it was M D L sixty or one, which is the. Which is actually the regulation in question, or sixty-three, which is the board's authority. Um, was that a comment for us to uh?
Yeah, so it it is since you're amending um, your statement of facts, if you could clarify. Yeah, make very clear that this is a request to waive sixty paragraph one. Under the board's authority granted by sixty paragraph three. And then, and then it's for for our council to be alerted to the long confusing. Series of resolutions that's used to mix up these these sections. And interestingly, even the announcement, um, the original description of this case. In our calendar described it as a variance. So actually, no, it's not a variance. It's a, it's a waiver under M D L sixty. When we see the word variance, we're actually thinking of a a um, seventy-two twenty-one. So in other words, the board's been quite confused in its resolution history by the description of what was. Um, granted on the site. So I just want our council and you as council. Um, to ma- understand and make it very clear what it is this board is being asked to do and has been asked to do in the past. Okay?
Absolutely. I I believe at one point there was a variance filed in addition to the M D L. Appeal, and I think that's where the confusion comes from. If you trace it back way back. Um, so we'll, we'll make sure that we clean that up. Thank you.
Right, so I think the DOB's objection originally. Was um, about section twenty-five dash four twelve in the zoning resolution. And so that's kind of what um. The original resolution referred to. So it was saying it's a a waiver. Of M D L sixty-three, which is not correct. And then also a waiver, or let's say a variance of twenty-five four twelve. Then it looks like within that same case. The applicant was asked to go back and get a new DOB objection. To eliminate reference to twenty-five four twelve. And so a replacement resolution was actually issued on the same date. And the other one was not officially superseded. So I'd like our council to note that that. First resolution should have been indicated as superseded by the second one. Um, and seems like they traveled along together confusingly. Um, and so. Just for the future to know what that is. Okay.
Nothing like BSA archaeology.
Yeah.
Good stuff. Okay, um, the next question uh, that that I can sort of address before turning this over to Charles is um, the recapture signs. So um, my understanding in. Uh, what I believe is shown on the the drawings is there are recapture signs at the entrance ramps. To each of the two garages. And in the larger garage, there are two additional recapture signs. Um, we're happy to do whatever the board would like us to do, obviously. Where would you like us to place the recapture signs? And we'll make sure that they're there in high visibility and 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 doing all the work they need to. Um, but other than at the entrance ramps. Where I I I believe Commissioner Hartley Brown mentioned at the entrances to the garages, do you mean at the sort of pedestrian entrances to the garages?
You know where? You know where all the pricing signs usually are at the entrance?
Okay.
Can you have them right there?
Absolutely.
And then I guess take a photo of each one with a key to the plan, so we know that it's in each building.
Will do.
So so the drawings need to be very clear, the actual location of that sign. You know, pointing to it because there is actually signage. Um, drawings that show everything but the recapture signs. You know, it says how much uh. Basically, rules of the Department of Consumer Affairs and things like that, but then you don't see the recapture sign on any of the drawings.
We will, we will put notes on the drawings as to where the recapture signs are. Um. We definitely have one next to the pricing info when you first come in and the notes, sorry, the DCA notes and all that stuff. Um, and there's also another one inside where the other. Pricing stuff is restated and another one next to um. Where you have your first round of restaurant more spaces. So we will, we will document all those.
Okay, but also on the drawings, you have drawings of the actual signage and the text of the signs. But you don't have a drawing of a recapture sign and the text of the recapture sign. That needs.
We will add that. Yes.
Um, I believe the last outstanding question was Commissioner Shonda's question about the. Total signage in the surface area, which I'll I'll turn to Charles to answer. And I'll just shut up.
Well, revise them. Um, I'm pretty sure that's a typo in there. And uh, miscalculation, so I will make sure that they make perfect sense and they are consistent with the prior approval.
Great. Good answer. Okay, anything else? Anything we left out, Commissioner?
Um. Big question that I had was regarding the P W one that you're requesting. We have submitted P W ones with a draft schedule A. It's of course a draft schedule A because it doesn't have the expiration date on the variance. Um, so once we have that, we'll put that into our schedules. Um, do you require anything else other than those P W ones and the draft schedules?
Um, isn't there a separate application when you apply for a CO?
So it's an alt one. Um, no, but actually this one has work because it's uh, assuming that we will be, that we would. We pre-opened it and assumed that the board would wanna change something. Um, but we could turn it into an alt one no work. Um, it's just, that's what we're using to apply for COs.
Okay, you apply with an alt one no work?
Yes, yes, we will apply without not one to work. If there's no work requested by the board, if there's any work requested by the board. We will, we will. Continue with the alt one with work. Um. It's worth noting is that DOB standards have changed since the first original set of applications were filed to request certificates of occupancies. There's one bin number per building segment, so each of the the buildings above has an actual bin number. So the the DOB has requested that we file an application for each one of the building segments with a bin. So that is twelve running applications.
Okay, well, okay. Okay, so um. So if you could then give us. The alt one no work, I don't think there's any discussion about work other than maybe moving a sign, which isn't really under. Isn't the thing, right? So um, so that we see that all of the applications in particular for the. Buildings that have no CO to date. Have been prepared and the only thing missing is our approval for you to be able to. I, you couldn't even submit them, right? It's just you'd get an objection.
I mean, if there's no work proposed, yeah, we will just submit everything and just.
Okay, so why don't you do that? Submit them. And show us that they've been submitted. That way we know the CO review is, has already begun. And then it's, then we don't have to worry that, you know, down the line, we don't see a CO in another however many years this.
Sounds reasonable.
Okay, great. Um, Vice Chair Shonda has her hand up.
Thanks. Um, I had one question, that is with regards to the ramps and the reason for asking for. If those ramps are being used also has to do with where the uh, recapturing uh, signage should be. So. My question was there are altogether six ramps. And two are really the public ramps. Um, so the remaining ramps, are those being used by pedestrians to exit? Um, and are there signage there? And shouldn't the recapturing signs also be located next to those?
Um, I can answer just as a, to what I've observed there. So. In the southern building, the one uh. The one on block. So it's um. Let's start with the north. So north. So just go through drawings.
Put the drawings up?
Yeah, you know what? That's uh, that would be ideal. Or in fact, maybe I could even do it myself. Um.
Um, Kurt, can you give Mr. Alakiel permission?
He should be able to.
Okay, good.
Just a second. Me. Get this. To work. Sorry. Is it visible now?
Yes.
All right, so. Um, is my cursor visible?
Uh, yes.
All right, so on this one. Um, you enter through this ramp here. Um, you carry on this way and you park over here. Where there is a um. What's it called? Where there's a, actually no.
Booth.
There's a booth, yes, I believe a booth is over here. Um, they take your car, they park it wherever. Um, this ramp here is used for pedestrian circulation. Um, this one is not used to, it's um, just used for emergencies. Um, and this goes in and out, it's used both ways. Um, there's a recapture sign here. There's a recapture sign here. There's another recapture sign here.
So do you want that on the plans or like mark? Do you want the ramps? Do you want the ramps designated to what it just said?
Yes.
Okay.
We'll do that.
So the the ramp in the middle that you said is for circulation, so somebody who's picking up their car might walk. Up or down that ramp?
For this one? Yeah, it's open.
Yeah, so I think that's what um, Vice Chair Shonda is talking about, that there should be a recapture sign at the head of that ramp as well. So that when they come in or when they're leaving, they see the recapture option.
Okay, we will do that.
Okay.
Um, actually, the second one. Here, there's one. Here, the recapture sign. Noted here. Um, you go down on this one. I believe this is an exit. This appears to be unutilized right now.
Okay, so.
To address the 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 comments, we can place the recapture signs at all of the ramps to alleviate the concern.
Yeah, maybe that's the easiest and eventually.
Comes active. Right, yeah, I think that makes more sense. Uh, so should should any of the circulation plan or any of the temporary for any reason, any ramp has to close or. It's better to have it all covered. You don't have to come to us or or be in in violation of anything.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Great. Okay. So anything else?
Uh, you want the booth, uh, just a sec. Do you want the booth noted? You said there was a booth?
Tony, not a booth. It's a table, attendant, sit and receive.
Oh, okay.
That's why you have a recapture sign at that location because it's where an attendance, that's right. So a person walks in down the ramp and goes to the attendant to collect their. To ask for their car. Is that how it works?
Correct.
They couldn't walk up, sorry, walk through either of the ramps are open.
Okay, they have to actually go all the way into the garage down where the cars are in order to request the car then.
That is correct.
Okay. Okay, um, then I would like to go to the public.
Okay, so the application we are discussing currently is ninety-two ninety-nine VZ ninety-four ninety-nine VZ ninety-six ninety-eight. One hundred and one oh two ninety-nine VZ for sixty-fourth Road and sixty-fourth Avenue, Queens. It's an application to extend the term for an M D L. Um, if you wanna call in or you're calling in, six four six five five eight eight six five six. Zoom webinar ID number is nine one three five nine eight one one eight two one. Passcode is two six six nine six three. If you're already in the Zoom room, please raise your Zoom hand by pressing star nine. And star six is to unmute to speak.
Yay. Uh, okay, so how much time to respond to these comments?
Charles, the lead time here is um. The filing of the applications, how much time do you need for that?
I think um, probably to be realistic, four to five weeks.
All right.
It's twelve applications, so we gotta get them all in order.
Right, okay, great. So let's see if there's anyone who called in. Um. There is one person with a phone number. If you would like to speak, you raise your hand with star nine. And if the other two people who are in the waiting room would like to speak, please raise your Zoom hand. Otherwise, give it a second. Um. Someone get admitted to speak? No. All right. I don't see anyone in the, in either the room, inside of our. Whatever we're called here, the paddling room, paddleless rooms, or the Zoom room with their hands up. So then, um, making a note. When whenever you say four to five weeks, I always take the outside because that gives a little more cushion. So I have five weeks to submit. And we'll let you know when it, when we schedule you for a continued hearing, okay?
Just just to add for the record before we leave, um, the community board asked us on Friday to uh, to present to their land use committee. Um, so. Uh, sort of unexpected at this this hour, but we are presenting tonight uh, to the land use committee.
Okay.
Please be sure to submit the, any presentation materials you use.
Thank you, we will do so.
Right. Great, okay, thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, um, Madam Chair, do you wanna recall the other case or?
Right, so, but it, so I need to get a little poll. It's ten after twelve. We've been sitting here for two hours. Normally, we take a ten minute break at twelve. Um, hopefully, this recalling of this other case will only take like ten minutes. And then we'll be, have a break till two. What's the opinion?
Let's just go through it and then take a break.
Okay, is that everyone okay with that? Okay, good.
Okay. Call that. So we are recalling decision item eight. Two zero one. two zero one seven two sixty-one VZ, five twenty-seven East New York Avenue, Brooklyn.
And I know we were supposed to give them a little heads up, I'm not sure that they've been listening. Carla, can you?
And we can we can contact.
Yeah, okay. Sorry, should I make sure they were contacted before? No, I didn't know whether we were going to be able to do it, that's why I didn't say. Ron Mendel's case, sorry. And according to my notes, he's the only person who appeared.
Okay, I'm also calling him, I emailed him and I'm calling him right now.
Okay, thanks. Because the afternoon session um might go on for a while, so I I'm not sure that we'll be able to do that.
So um he's speaking with Matt Schomer and they're going to try to log on now.
Okay. Okay. Who's Matt Schomer? They don't yeah, they don't need to answer our questions in front of us, I want them to just understand what the questions are.
I see Mr. Mendel in the waiting.
Here we go. Good. Great. Ron, are you ready? Unmute yourself. Mr. Mendel, unmute. You may be on the phone at the moment, but I just want to know you know that we're not going to ask you to solve these questions now, we just want to make sure you understand what the questions are.
Still has to be sworn in though.
Yeah, I know, but I just want to, I'm assuming that the reason he didn't unmute is because he's still on the phone.
Mr. Mendel, please present.
Please unmute yourself, Mr. Mendel, and get off your other activities so that we can move on. Thank you. Hey, please state your name, make sure you can hear us. Mr. Mendel? So maybe he's having trouble calling in. Um, the person who just called in, let's allow talking permitted. Um, you unmute your phone with star six. There you go.
Hi, Ms. Mathews.
Yeah, hi, Mr. Mendel.
Hi, everyone, good good afternoon, forgive me, my colleague Matthew Schomer is signing on right now.
Okay.
Okay, just let me know when you all together so I can sway you in.
Of course, thank you, I'm sorry about that.
It's okay. Mr. Schomer, unmute, please. You there, Matthew?
I am here.
Okay. Both of you, do you affirm to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth in your testimony before this board? Raise your right hand, rap. Um, in your testimony before this board and to respond honestly to board member questions.
I do.
Ron?
Yes, I do.
Okay, please proceed.
Sure, so we um listened to the review session this morning. We understand the concerns, we just want to get make sure we're clear on what the task at hand is and how we can best address this for the next hearing. So just a little history as our understanding was, which was the reason we only submitted the the three deeds for lot seventy-three and seventy-four was that our understanding was the issue was the board was unsure whether seventy-three and seventy-four were a single zoning lot or had ever been a single zoning lot.
No, so that so let 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 instead of you going back about your misconceptions about what it was you were supposed to do, let's clarify, okay? It isn't about the zoning lot. As I said at the review session, the standard for hardship is that the site has not been held by a predecessor entitled in common with the site that's claiming the hardship. Because if a predecessor entitled held the lots together and then subdivided it, then that predecessor arguably created the hardship complained of. So when we discovered that not only was lot one held in common, in fact, lot seventy-four was part of lot one until a relatively recent subdivision of the lot. And then it was sold back at a certain point to the owner of lot seventy-four. It was held in common with us with a predecessor entitled for a number of years. So any any transfer of that portion of lot one away from lot seventy-four arguably creates the hardship complained of. It's the same situation with seventy-three, but arguably a more problematic situation because there appears on the on the deed of record to be an open right of first refusal to close a deal on lot seventy-three, which is really just like a little taxpayer, there's like just one little structure on it. So obviously, it's not a development site yet, and there's an option to exercise the right of first refusal that appears to be open to this day, but nonetheless was an option, not just for a predecessor entitled, but for the current owner entitled, the current uh title holder. So so the so the issue is the self-created hardship definition is being hit by those two lots on either side having been create potentially created by predecessors entitled. It has nothing to do with whether the site is today one zoning lot. Certainly, it was one zoning lot um at the time when lot before lot one was subdivided because and arguably it was one zoning lot also with lot seventy-three because the nineteen forty-five um I think it's the nineteen forty-five C of O shows or maybe nineteen, yeah, something C of O shows both lot one and lot seventy-three on the same on the same um uh certificate of occupancy. So that's where you're getting into the definitions of zoning lot back in the day, the A definition, which is simply a lot of record. So so you have a lot of issues where it certainly was one zoning lot at some point in its um it's either recent or distant history, okay? But we're not talking about a zoning lot, we're talking about the fact that if I own lot A and I also own lot B adjacent, I can't say that only owning lot B is my hardship because I could easily expand my building onto lot A and cure arguably the deficiencies that I am complaining about on lot A, okay?
Understood, and and I think with respect, we are totally on the same page, I think with respect to one and seventy-four, that they were a zoning lot, a a twelve-ten A zoning lot, and they were in single ownership and they were part of the same tax lot. I guess where the confusion for us stems from is that the there is a right of first refusal option for us for lot seventy-three, but we don't have any like we can't, our applicant cannot exercise that option tomorrow, you know, it's it's contingent on whether the adjacent owner decides he wants to to sell the property. You know, we don't, it's not an option contract where we can decide to to exercise that, we only have the option to to make the offer once, you know, that owner has has decided to sell. So it's not the case that we can go to them tomorrow and say, hey, we're going to develop a larger building.
No, no, but so now you you keep using the word zoning lot in the sentence, you need to get that out of your head. We talk about common ownership with a predecessor entitled, okay? So at at several times over the course of the history of these three lots, the three lots were held in common ownership by a predecessor entitled subsequent to nineteen sixty-one, which is the the board's standard. And it doesn't matter whether they were all held at the same time together, which by the way, I think they were, or whether they alternated between owning an adjacent lot to the left and then an adjacent lot to the right. At some point in the history of this site, all three lots were held in common. And so when they were subdivided into these three lots, two of which are odd little squares that are shallow, right? Um, which historically got developed in the opposite direction, they got developed along the property lines, right, along the frontage, but anyway, that doesn't really matter. Um, the the issue is that when they were subdivided into these three little lots, or let's just say lot one and seventy-four, two little lots, but I am actually talking about the three, it created potentially the hardship complained of, and that's what you have to prove did not happen. So when I was explaining that, you know, maybe you could make the argument about the rear yard condition as to lots one and seventy-four, the rear yard condition was the same problem consistently, five feet of that building is an interior lot and has to have a rear yard waiver in order to be developed, right, because it's a shallow lot. But um maybe because it was only a ten foot, it would have only been a ten foot rear yard required on that lot had you um not transfer, let's see, held the property in common in nineteen sixty-one, right? So I I don't actually know with that because I don't remember what I found, but the but the issue is um the zoning resolution also deals with the subject for shallow lots and whether or not you could have applied the ten foot rule versus the thirty foot rule. And without checking exactly when the transfer times were, I'm not really sure what the answer to that is. But you potentially are creating the hardship with respect to the rear yard also. And with respect to lot coverage, it looks like it really was created by a predecessor entitled. With respect to lot coverage, because you just would have had a bigger lot to spread the lot coverage on, and it would have been a corner lot which is entitled to seventy foot um seventy percent coverage as opposed to sixty. So this requires actually, as Commissioner Ali Brown explained, that you do drawings that show that had these three lots been held in common ownership, you still would have need the waivers complaint described, right? And and the 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 best version of that case with respect to a not-for-profit religious institution is that project witness case where it was two narrow lots, long narrow lots, held currently in common. One by a synagogue and one by this not-for-profit essentially effectively a museum and or study center. And so the the question was, why don't you just combine those two lots into one and combine the functions of synagogue and study center into one? And they did very in-depth study showing that the two uses were incompatible. So that was when they were currently held together, right? It's different, though, in your case, because they're not currently held together, so you have to say, what if I was proceeding with the proposed house of worship? And the and I owned all of those lots in common like I did at some point in the history of the site. And so what could I have built on there and have I created the hardship complained of? Those that's the drawings that have to be prepared, and they can't be just like simple um simple line drawings of a site plan because that doesn't explain why it doesn't work, right? You have to show that it wouldn't work to meet your programmatic needs. Okay?
Understood, and I guess the other part of that is, like you said, because they're not currently both in single ownership, what is the like snapshot of time that we need to reflect in those drawings? Because the corner lot, lot one has a
Forget the snapshot. You're you're getting into the weeds without getting, you're not seeing a forest for the trees. The forest is the lots were held in common subsequent to nineteen sixty-one. Any decision by the predecessor entitled to transfer out ownership of that arguably created the hardship that you're complaining of today. So at one time, all three lots were held in common, that's clear. And so you need to, so you know, just because they sold this one yesterday and bought that one the next day doesn't mean that they didn't trade off these lots and create this lot that actually extends basically an L-shaped lot that extends from the corner to that interior lot, okay? You're going to need to look at all of the lots held in common.
But I guess that is that is that assuming that everything is vacant on those sites?
Well, you're tearing down this building, right? And the other building was already torn down. Yeah, and the building on lot seventy-three is a one-story taxpayer. Right? So even if it weren't, and it doesn't count as lot coverage because it's only one story.
Okay.
So even if it's today a bakery, if you took it over again, you know, it was a candy factory in a in whatever time it was, it was the whatever the other use was, I mean, we have that's the other thing is we uh check the tax photos, you should do the same. The nineteen forty and the nineteen eighty tax photos tell you what the buildings are that are on a lot, it will help inform maybe it'll inform your argument. I mean, I I do have to say, you need to be a little bit, you need to be creative when you're doing this and not because what you're trying to do is counter the conclusion, potential conclusion that you created the hardship complained of. You need to be creative in analyzing it, and and that's why it's very important to look at the project witness case, and then there were some other ones that um maybe Tony will remember the case numbers of there, there's the one where we had the two little funny, almost like bowtie shape when they were separate, but they got separated right fairly uh close in time to the application, but the applicant, I think that actually was But the applicant, I think that actually was Todd Dale's case. The applicant was able to demonstrate that even if they were together as one, it wouldn't have cured the hardship. And then there was one other case like that, that might have been a sign case, but I'm not, I'm not really sure. So if you can rack brains about which one that is, our staff will probably remember which the cases are. But you can also do a, a search on our, on our website to see about the D finding. Okay?
Understood. Yeah. I mean, I, I think it's just, right, our issue is that if we, if we're assuming a large, a vacant lot, that's three, that's, you know, more than twice the size of our existing building, right, or, or existing lot right now, that's, that building is going to be much, much bigger than.
But don't forget what, what's going on here. You're asking for a rear yard waiver for a particular location and a lot coverage waiver. And there are zoning regulations that apply. So that's why you need drawings. You're trying to do this in your head. It's not going to work. You need the architect to do drawings of what would be developed as of rights on this lot. And then you would be comparing them to the, to the programmatic needs of the applicant. Okay? So, you know, it's very possible that this is a self-created hardship and you won't be able to get out of it. But that's part of the problem is we always ask this question. And I'm, I'm disappointed that, that this information was not presented to us way back when, when we first looked at this case, we always ask, was the property held by a predecessor entitled? And the answer was no. And it was, right? So that's why this all came up. And in part it came up because we couldn't figure out which tax lot we were talking about. The CO says seventy-three and we're on seventy-four, like, what's going on? Those kinds, that kind of intellectual curiosity should have driven you to do research way back when. Okay? Okay. Uh, any other, so, and if you have questions as you're doing this, please reach out to our executive director, to counsel, so that you're not sort of wandering around. Okay? Okay, anything else anybody wants to add? Okay. So I guess we have to open this up to the public because we reopened the hearing.
I thought Jella had a hand up.
Yeah, go ahead, Jell.
It was just a thought because it seems like you want them to consider the three lots vacant. But in project witness, there was an existing synagogue next door. So they analyzed it with the existing building next door.
No, they analyze, we asked them to analyze the two lots combined to create one building where one part of it was a synagogue, I guess at the first level. And then the other parts were project witness at the upper level. And what they was, and we said, you know, so show, they, they said, oh, the entrances aren't compatible because we don't want strangers coming into the synagogue, whatever. And so we said, so create two entrances. It's a corner lot. You can do that. So they created two entrances. And then we saw that all of the circulation and all of that made the building really inefficient. And that's how they proved it. So it was, so at the beginning, they only looked at the existing building on the synagogue site. But by the end, it, we said, no, you have to look at it as a, as a new building. Okay, thank you.
This is Ron Mendel speaking. I think, I think it's, I don't, I don't think we could look at the corner lot, lot one, as a vacant lot. DOB did approve a set of drawings before Aleah filed their application. And that probably is in the middle of construction.
You're, you're missing, you're completely missing the point. And that's why I'm actually quite concerned. You need to, so the predecessor entitled were, were in the nineties, right? Or up until two thousand eight, right? So if I were to just go back to all the dates, right? The, the predecessor entitled isn't yesterday. It's, um, there was a nineteen seventy-five subdivision of lot one, so that was the first one. And then there was a re-transfer back in nineteen eighty-two of lot one to the owner of seventy-four. So that was a holding on both lots until nineteen eighty-four. You have ownership of lot seventy-three in common between at least nineteen ninety and two thousand seven. So what you've got is clearly, and, and before that, seventy-three and lot one were held in common, right? So, um, so, and I didn't actually go back because I think I didn't have access to the deeds in nineteen sixty about lot seventy-three. So the, the issue is, again, you have common ownership. You look at the lots as vacant, just like we did with project witness. Because certainly ten years ago, twenty years ago, these were teardowns. And not, we're not saying that today you have to build on it. We're saying that back in the day, you could have avoided creating the hardship by not subdividing the lot. That's what the predecessor entitled is about in, in the D finding. And I really encourage you to first review those other applications and when these arguments were made. And then work with your architect who's doing the sketches, the drawings. And try to be like, think as you're putting this together, what your argument is as opposed to just sort of like kind of robotically doing what I just said. I mean, I, as a land use council, would figure out ways to make my argument based on the instructions of the board. We need to do the same. That's what project witness did.
Okay.
Okay. All right then. So how much time do you need to respond to this?
We need probably a decent amount of time to get the architect involved again and make sure he can get drawings that are sufficient.
What's a decent?
A six, eight weeks, something like that.
Okay. Okay, that's what I'm writing. And please do reach out to our staff for assistance so that you're not going off on a, in unhelpful tangent, okay? Okay?
Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
So we already did the public? No, not yet, right. Did?
We did. Jen, nobody called.
Okay, so then that concludes the, anything else we want to add? So then that concludes the public hearing for March twenty-second, ten AM session. We will resume at two PM for the review session, the public hearing for the two o'clock session.
Okay, great. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.